That might be an impossible mission.[244.12][244.12](laughter)
All right, welcome everyone. It is Tuesday, November 1st, 2022. You're here in the Athens-Clark County City Hall for the monthly voting meeting of the commission and myself, Mayor Kelly Gertz. We'll have several opportunities for public input tonight, and I'll address rules in just a second, but I'll begin by asking Clerk Spratlin to call the roll for us.
Devonport, Blaine.
Here.
Wright.
Present.
Jensen.
Here.
Hool.
Present.
Edwards.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Walton.
Here.
Hamby.
Here.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, now's that time we will approve minutes of meetings of Tuesday, October 4th, Tuesday, October 11th, Tuesday, October 18th, and our non-voting meetings from the last month. Do I hear a motion for approval of these minutes?
So moved. Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Hool. I have a second from Commissioner Link. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Do we have any written communications tonight, Madam Clerk?
No.
All right, we do have one presentation, so I'm going to relocate.
All right, we, of course, fantastic staff here in Athens-Clark County. Sometimes that means people are doing a wonderful job shepherding projects through. Sometimes it means that they're providing exemplary service in other ways, and sometimes it means that they get out on the roadways and they prove that they are top in class. And so there's one of those who I'd like to call forward now, so I'd like to ask Lavoris Huff to come on down.[354.03][354.03](applause) All right.[356.03][356.03](applause) Come on, come on. All right. I want to stand here beside Mr. Huff, good to see you, because I know that when I am near him, I am in safe hands, and that not only is true based on just we know about Mr. Huff, but what he has demonstrated in a national competition. So I want to let you know what's happened here recently. Solid Waste Driver Lavoris Huff won first place, first place in the Automated Side Loader Competition at the International Solid Waste Association of North America Truck Equipment and Mechanic Road EO in El Paso, Texas, way down on the border.[411.31][411.31](applause) So, so on October 14th and 15th, Mr. Huff demonstrated his capabilities to be among all of those around the globe, and so I think Day 10 of 500 is next, is that right? Nice, congratulations. All right, so we've got the award for Lavoris.[433.22][433.22](applause) All right, keep it up, and I'll tell you, if these folks can go down Pulaski Street without knocking vehicles around, they go down anywhere. Thank you, sir. Woo-hoo.
Mayor, the call will now.
There's not only one thing in Athens that's number one in the nation, we got Lavoris Huff.
Yes, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, boy.
All right, friends, we will have many opportunities for resident input tonight. We're going to have input on the consent agenda, separate input on old and new business, input on planning and zoning items, and then at the conclusion of the meeting, input on any items not on tonight's agenda. Generally, input follows the same format. Residents will have three minutes to provide feedback. There's a light in front of Clerk Spratlin. When you begin speaking, it will turn green. When you have 30 seconds remaining, it will turn yellow, and when your time has expired, it will turn red. There are cards both on the desk outside and on the podium in front of you if, when you provide input, you would fill that card out and hand it to Attorney Drake, who is right in front of the podium. That way, we can make sure that we accurately capture your name and area of input for the public record. So, that being said, I did first want to ask, is there any commissioner who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda tonight? Those consent agenda items are 1 through 11.
Mayor, I would like to move, pull number five.
All right, so number five is going to go to old business discussion. Is there any other item that any commissioner would like to remove from the consent agenda before we get public input on that consent agenda? All right, is there anyone who would like to speak to any consent agenda items which are now numbers 1 through 4 and 6 through 11? Would any member of the public like to speak to any of those items, 1 through 4 or 6 through 11? Those are our remaining consent agenda items. All right, here in the crickets, out there, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda from a member of the body.
So moved. Second.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Thornton, a second from Commissioner Myers. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, are there any opposed?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, and we have some ordinances to read, so I'm going to have Attorney Drake do that at this point.
Agenda items 1 through 4 have an ordinance. Agenda item 1, an ordinance to amend the FY 2023 annual operating and capital budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide additional funding for the Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia through the University of Georgia, UGA, for the downtown Athens Public Safety Camera System, improved lighting initiative, and for other purposes. Agenda item 2, an ordinance to amend the code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to partial removal of parking restrictions on North Chase Street and for other purposes. Agenda item number 3, an ordinance to amend the code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to parking restrictions on Woodlawn Avenue and for other purposes. Agenda item number 4, an ordinance to amend the FY 2023 annual operating and capital budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide grant funding if awarded from the 2022 Public Safety Community Violence Reduction Grant, PSC BRG program for hiring, recruitment, and centers, and for other purposes.
All right, thanks, and let the record reflect those ordinances. I appreciate that, Attorney Drake. All right, we are now moving on to old and new business, and so that is item 5, the grant application, and then items 12 through 21. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to any of these items, 5 and 12 through 21? If so, now's the time to approach the podium. All right, if you would provide for us your name and the item to which you are speaking.
Yes.
Make sure you fill out that card for Attorney Drake.
I'm Teresa Friedlander, and I am pleased to be here tonight to speak in support of agenda item number 15, the TSPLOS 2018 Project 15, Atlanta Highway Corridor Improvements Project, Mitchell Bridge and Timothy Road. I'm really excited to be here to promote this because it represents a lot of work by a lot of people over a long time, and, you know, there, there have been a lot of, a lot of people who have come together to really make this proposal, and so I hope that you will support it. I just want to say a few things. I did put in a public comment, and I'm not going to read that here, but I just want to say that transportation is a lifelong interest of mine. As an adult, I didn't always have a car. I had to walk places. I had to take the bus. I had to take Metro. I often rode my bike. So transportation is something I care about and I understand deeply. It's how energy flows through a community. Timothy Road, which I drive multiple times daily, was not designed for the traffic it carries, and it's a narrow, two-lane, shoulderless road originally for serving rural properties. The alignment of Timothy Road and Highway 441 at the loop caused the traffic volume to, to jump, and also it changed the character of the traffic coming through the road. And nothing has been done to improve the design of Timothy Road since then. It functions now as an arterial road for through traffic, coming and going, and across the past four or so decades, large tracts of land were subdivided to form cul-de-sac communities, and sidewalks were built part of the way but weren't required as, as neighborhoods were being built further down and towards the loop. So, right now, neighborhoods that are in cul-de-sac communities and are individual homes facing the street are 100% car-dependent. According to the Athens In-Motion Plan, Timothy Road is considered a bicycle route. There are shared road signs and share markings placed along the road, but those provide no, no safety for anyone who is brave enough or desperate enough to use, use a bicycle on Timothy Road. There are people living on the corridor who do not drive, some do not own cars. There are two transit stops between Loop 10 and Roads Drive as Timothy Road bends toward Macon Highway. There is no sidewalk for transit users, only worn muddy tracks. One poor soul regularly rides his bicycle along Timothy Road, moving to the sidewalk at Fox Trace. Bike Athens gave him a helmet.
Thank you, Teresa. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Please support.
Would anyone else like to speak to old or new business? Again, that is item 5 and 12 through 21.
You guys are getting out early tonight. My name is Alan Jones, 195 Xavier Drive, and I'm also speaking, surprise, on item 15 in favor of the user group's recommendations specifically to allocate the TSPLOS funds for Phase 1 of the shared use path on Timothy Road from Skyline to Berkeley Hills. Sounds like this may go on hold until next month, but I wanted to throw in a few more words, and again, I just wanted to say thank you for the support this group has shown and thrown behind making Athens a better, safer place for all modes of transportation. You guys have been amazing over the years in that, so thank you for that. I've been involved with the neighborhoods along this project for a long time, and as I said in an email, an email I sent you earlier, I can confidently say that most of the residents along Timothy Road are extremely excited about the prospect of a shared use path. This is especially true for the residents from Berkeley Hills on Lower Timothy to McNuts Creek, Towns Walk, Sheetz Bowls, and Cheatham Drives, Georgian Hills, Timothy Estates, Fox Trace, and Tanglewood, who have nothing but a busy road. There is an outline of a bike painted on the road, but I'm not sure if that is a share row or if that's left over from an accident investigation. People I talked to and those who have responded to the multiple ACC surveys conducted along the corridor strongly prefer the shared use path to a simple sidewalk, and this segment was one that by far received the most pieces of positive citizen input. Since it's a bit far for many in this area to walk to any resources, biking and e-biking pose a more valid option for commuting to work, shopping, et cetera. Thinking into the future, where there's a plan to put a greenway down the Middle Oconee River, which parallels Timothy, it doesn't make sense to have residents in this corridor drive to this greenway and park in the back of neighborhoods if they could bike it. This is the beginning of something that will be amazing for the West Side. Once the greenway does come through and a multi-use bridge is built across it, as is in the plan, that connection would finally allow West Side residents a quick and safe access across the river to the Beechwood Shopping Area, Clark Middle School, the library, medical facilities, and even a little further but still easily bikable, Clark Central and UGA, all without having to ride down the Atlanta Highway, as is the main route now. Please play the long game and support the shared use path. TSPLOS are only five years, and there are plenty more to come, and please get this moving as expediently as possible, and again, thank you.
Thank you, Alan. All right, would anyone else like to speak to old or new business? Again, that is item 5 and then items 12 through 21. All right, seeing none, we will begin discussion. All right, item 5, the grant application for the improved neighborhood outcomes in disproportionately impacted communities program was pulled from the consent agenda, so Commissioner Thornton, I'll give you an opportunity to begin.
I'm sorry for this late afternoon, but I know nobody didn't want to see a CDO unexpectedly, so I've been on the phone with County Manager Williams this afternoon. The application of 100% support, over a year ago, well, Assistant Manager Jones, how long have you been here?
About quite a year and a half.
Not quite a year, so it has been over a year ago. One of the first meetings that we had over was when Assistant Manager Jones met with a group of coaches that were concerned about the field at Satterfield, and we discussed the repairs, and I think some, some light maintenance work was done, but it still needed infrastructure work. And after reading the application and talking to Manager Blaine Williams this afternoon, I have asked the manager if we could include in the tennis court and the repairs at Hurd Park into this grant application. I know we're on a, a, a tight deadline, but this field has to be fixed or should be fixed anyway, and this is an opportunity to fix that field with the tennis courts and the renovations at Hurd Park. Satterfield, yeah. And I do think that, I think, talking to Manager Williams today, I had not talked to any of those young men that were with us that day, but I did get to talk to them, and they know that it has not been fixed as well as it should be. I talked to the deputy commissioner and one of the other coaches. So this is an opportunity to go ahead on and fix Satterfield, and I would, and I guess I'm in line, Manager Williams, to make a motion to do a CDO that I will have prepared next week because the deadline for this application is the 18th, but we should be able to get it done. So I'm going to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to table this, hold this, for me to work with Manager Williams and Kent Kilpatrick for a CDO next week to make the repairs on that field.
All right, so motion is to hold until the 8th of November, is that correct?
Is that the date?
Yes, it'll be the 10th.
It'll be the 10th.
10th.
Because of election.
Correct, yes, hold until the 10th of November, given, and for the public, we're moving our work session to Thursday from Tuesday. So, hold until the 10th. Motion from Commissioner Thornton, is there a second?
Second.
All right, I got a second from Commissioner Myers. Any further input?
Yes, thank you, Thornton, and I just have a question. So, your CDO is incorporating to fix Hurd Park tennis courts? Can you elaborate?
No, Hurd is already in the proposal. Hurd is already in the proposal, and tennis courts at Satterfield is already in the proposal. I'm proposing to add the fields in Satterfield.
Okay, thank you. As I understand it, some drainage needs are in order there. Manager Williams, do you may want to?
If I might, I'll give a little more, and then there'll be more information forthcoming as Commissioner Thornton. So, there was a meeting, there were concerns, and this is common also to Holland Park, y'all, that these are older properties, really, a lot of our park properties, Memorial Park as a matter of fact. Stormwater is your top concept issue, right? So, the issues are that the fields are impacted by drainage, and the drainage is not so much originating on the fields, it's the bigger park. And so, we have had complaints from our football users on the east side and our baseball users on the west side, like, you need to regrade these fields, and we've all heard that, but if we don't fix the bigger problem, okay. So, we, for our part, and, and I know, Kelly, you've toured some of these parks and heard these very same complaints directly from users, so we did use one of our on-call consultants to do a high-level stormwater study of both Holland and Satterfield, and they gave us some ideas on things we could do. Some of the low-hanging fruit, if you will, Kent Kilpatrick Leisure Services has worked with landscape maintenance from Central Services, and they're going to, instead of hiring a contractor to do these things, we're going to try and do some things, and there's other bigger issues that we will do an RFP, but we've got some funding that y'all approved, set aside to deal with those things. But that's the bigger park problems and not the individual field issues that Commissioner Thornton's talking about. And so, what, specifically what this is about, if, if she agrees and sponsors this, is, is not taking away Hurd Park, not taking away the tennis courts, but adding a third grant project, which is eligible. Remember, it's locational, so Satterfield Park is in a qualified census tract. So we would add a new project, and that new project would happen after we fix some of the bigger drainage issues. The grant funds would pay for it, that's a good thing, and what we would do is probably regrade that large field on the right of Satterfield, probably take up the infield and make it a platform for soccer and football, and maybe move the fence as well. And so we'll, that's what Kent's initial suggestion was, and Commissioner Thornton said, well, we need more time to understand this, so staff will pull this together and submit it to Commissioner Thornton for her consideration for a CDO to share with y'all, and that, we all need some time to work through that, so we support the request to table. But, November 10th, since it's a November 18th deadline, we really need some direction in.
All right, great. Any further input? Commissioner Wright?
I just want to clarify the process, since it's a work session night, we'll have a special session, and the details, the details will be in Friday's packet, because we don't typically have a packet for work sessions.
When, when would you kind of anticipate that there be a, an amended agenda item with the CDO?
Yes, well, so, we wouldn't amend the agenda item because this is a, you know, that was the original staff recommendation, but we will give the information to Commissioner Thornton hopefully Thursday to go out on Friday. If she agrees.
Yeah, because I would like it to stay within the cycle of how we publish things that are going to be voted on, even though it's going to be a Thursday. That'd be great if it could work to be Friday and give everybody time to get it out there and work through the details. I, I support us. Rodney, what's there based on the conditions that we have? If we can get grant money, that'd be awesome.
Mr. Hamby?
Yeah, just another, just a quick procedural question. So, so if we know what we want to add to it or what needs to be added to it, Satterfield, Satterfield Football Field, is there no reason why we just couldn't add that and vote on it tonight? And I don't think any, I would imagine none of us are going to have an issue with what, what the language that needs to be added.
Well, it, it is a grant application, so it's not official until, but you're being asked to submit it and accept it. I, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood what it was they're voting on. So if that, and staff, you know, needs to crunch the numbers, I mean, we could do it after the fact and approve it tonight and share, you know, what the results were from the CDO, but particularly, Commissioner Thornton, I just want you to know what it is that you're putting forth and that it's all, but we'll go either way y'all want to.
I'm, I'm really comfortable, again, and when I spoke to you today, and my point is, we have so many people that come to us, so many issues, and they don't think that we're hearing them and not listening to it. So that was about 15, 12 to 15 guys in that room concerned, and if we don't even consider this, and we're just talking about a tennis, the tennis court repairs, we never talked about tennis courts repairs, not that I know of. So we, I'm, I'm comfortable voting on this tonight because I think everybody here understands that we are trying to qualify, make everything quality, not just one area. So I'm very comfortable if, if, if the rest of the commission has faith in you and, you and Kent to, to get the wording, and I'd be glad to make a motion to amend the recommendation to, to expand it for the football field.
Well, if I could, let me just give you a few qualifiers and then see if that's, so the, the grant is for up to $2 million. We feel like that we could add this third proposed project, if you will, you know, in, in the, the grant application. And that would be to take the large field on the right and regrade it and perhaps impact that, that field, and so it would move from a baseball softball field to a soccer football field, and I will, and, and we would, might move the fence, and that, that would all get taken care of. That, that's what the concept is.
And of course, the option that's in front of us now, kind of just more generically references renovations to Hurd Park and Community Center and Satterfield Park, but I think everybody has an understanding here, sitting as we speak, about the elements that would be included in the grant application.
Now, if I could, just one other thing, just so everybody understands, I mentioned this Commissioner Thornton today, so staff, Commissioner Thornton's accurate, everything she said, you know, we did some, you know, cosmetic work to the field because of the bigger stormwater issues, and, and staff decided that they're what, they're, they're, what they said is warranted, you know, there needs to be a better platform. And so staff's thought was that we would go to Southeast Clark Park, and there are those two, you know, in the middle of the, closest to the road, you've got two graded areas with a drainage ditch in the middle, and we were going to take that and make that an improved football slash soccer platform. And we budgeted some funds for it in the past budget year, and we didn't have enough to do it, and so we were coming back this year with some additional funds to do that, and we were going to move them over to Southeast Clark Park. In the meantime, because of a, a team not utilizing Walker Park, the same folks we talked to, I think, have been utilizing Walker Park, and that's a nice football facility, so they've been happy in the interim. If we, if we do, we're glad to go ahead and invest this in that Satterfield Park, and then they would, I guess, stay there if that's going to be the new, new area. So that's one direct, one consequence perhaps of putting our efforts there, but hey, if grant money pays for it, that, that's all much better.
Commissioner Devonport?
I've got a question. Did you mention, did you say, Manager Williams, that...
that we'll lose a football field at Satterfield, we'll lose a baseball field at Satterfield Park to enhance the football field? But that baseball field, excuse me, is widely used.
Well, my understanding is that the larger field, which is that softball field. So softball, adult softball's been a bit on the decline. And the need from, and I won't speak for Little League, this is what staff shared with me today, is that the other, the larger field on the other side of the park, behind the skate center, is where senior league plays. That's a full-size. And so there haven't been a great many numbers in late years with kids at that level playing there. So we feel like, just a quick read after the discussions today, is that that field should accommodate the need in the near future. So, and I will just say this for the people that are listening. All of our fields are pretty much multipurpose fields at one time or another. And there's just a lot of different scheduling that goes on. And Kent advised me that the field that we're talking about really is no longer used. Most of the activity is at the other large baseball field.
All right, hadn't heard from Commissioner Hou yet. And then I'll return to Commissioner Wright.
What time is this special call session going to be? Is it going to be at 5:30 or are we going to meet earlier, tack it on after?
So the evening's affairs would begin at 5:30, normal work session time? Well, we may not need it if we vote for this.
Yeah, we're talking about voting on it now.
Right. So whatever activity would happen would begin at 5:30.
Whatever, whoever's show, right.
Commissioner Wright?
Yeah, I appreciate the details Commissioner Davenport brought in. I wanted to clarify the fields, Commissioner, I mean, County Manager Williams. So what sounds like is the youth football dual baseball field is not being changed at Satterfield with this concept. But yet, an adult-sized field that is less used is becoming a youth football dual soccer.
That's, that's, yes.
Is that what I'm hearing? Because I think that's awesome because we're improving our youth opportunities. Like you say, we're scheduling, everything's always scheduled back to back. And that would be great to have that improved usage of the adult field to be youth football and soccer.
Yes, and I'm glad you made that qualification, Commissioner. It would not be regulation size, but it would be for youth.
Youth.
And just for folks that aren't familiar with Satterfield, so we'll still have a full-size regulation baseball field that the older youth can use, junior, senior. And then there's still two other youth baseball fields and one girl softball field. So, you know, we're, I guess we're bringing underutilized field to a higher purpose with grant funds.
All right, everybody.
Just a quick, I'm looking at the map. We're talking about the field that's to the left, like right behind the skating rink.
That's the one we're keeping.
That's the one we're keeping, so it's a bigger one to the right. Okay.
That's right. That, according to staff, really hasn't been played on in about 10 years.
Probably the first field one encounters as you drive.
That's right, right when you come into the right.
Thank you.
All right, so amended motion. We'll move forward, a grant application for these two facilities, understanding that the Satterfield element will include both tennis and football slash soccer field. All right, comfortable with that as a secondary, Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, moving on now to item 12, which is the Clark County Sheriff's Office request to increase the current vehicle fleet by three vehicles. Could I hear a motion regarding this item?
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Wright and a second from Commissioner Denson. Commissioner Wright?
I'm ready to vote.
Commissioner Denson, any follow-up?
I did have a couple of questions for the manager's office. I appreciate the attorney's office and Attorney Austin Jackson getting, answering some clarifications on the use of forfeited funds, which would be used for this purchase. One of my questions was about, you know, if we had a reporting of forfeited funds and their uses and how much is collected and such coming in. And it turns out that we do in Georgia. It is required, and I appreciate the sheriff's office definitely doing that and having those reports and seeing that. There is supposed to be a copy of a distribution order for forfeited funds supposed to be provided to this local government, the mayor commission via the manager's office annually from the district attorney's office. And so I had a question on if that has been provided. And if so, if that can be forwarded on to the mayor commission. And understanding that y'all might not know now. So I'll throw that one, I have one more question after that.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Denson. Like you, we learn every day new things. And so I really do appreciate the work that the attorney's office did. For my part, I did, as soon as I read it, called Chief Salters at the police department and say, hey, heads up, this is happening. And so we're going to meet and talk about what it means and what the reporting requirements are. We obviously want to be compliant with that. So I am not in possession of any report from the DA to this end.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you jumping on that quickly so that we can get that resolved and so that we can be having the required oversight with that. Especially because looking, pulling up the report that have been filed, which are oddly posted on the Carl Vinson Institute website as mandated by the state of Georgia, which is very odd. But I see that the multi-jurisdictional task force for Clark County has over $439,000 sitting in their budget currently, which is a lot of money. So definitely would like more information on that and the distribution and such. But as it directly relates to this agenda item, it seems all very clear with how the sheriff's office is pursuing this. And so I'm happy to approve it.
Any further input?
I just want to make a comment or question clarification here. I went there a lot of time trying to figure this out, to understand the process here. And basically, my understanding is that instead of turning in a couple of cars, the sheriff's department wants to hold on to them and use them. And that would increase the size of the fleet. And I'm wondering if it would be any advantage then for the sheriff's department to sort of, after the fact, put in a request in next year's budget to have those new, up the numbers officially in the budget, rather than just slip in this bad way? Would that make any difference?
It would be the same action, just separated by time. And I think, Commissioner, I hear you that, and I agree, that this type of request is, I advise our department directors that we do this in tandem with the budget. You know, the commissioners, the commission is responsible for authorizing all positions and all fleet and equipment. So you can't have it without y'all authorizing it. That's one piece to this. I think the sheriff, you know, saw the opportunity and a need for some vehicles and so asked for it when the two new ones came in. Hey, I want to keep what we got. I don't want to speak for him, but generally, that's the notion behind it. We just, you know, if the intent is to continue to use the vehicles beyond when they fail or are no longer serviceable, then we would ask that they do be placed on the replacement program. And so all of that, typically what we would do, the two cars come in, the two cars come out. And we would say, declare these surplus, and we would sell them. So the fact that he will continue to use them, even though this is out of our normal cycle, we would ask that you just go ahead and approve it now, if that's what you intend to do.
Okay, so this would then put them into the cycle. We're more or less doing that now.
Well, you would be authorizing the increase of the fleet vehicles as well as adding these to the replacement program.
Okay, that helps me understand it. You know, if I would just, I think it puts us in a slightly awkward position, but I understand the needs of the sheriff's office and I would encourage the sheriff's office to get, if there need for more vehicles next year, to get them in with that budget sooner. So, thank you.
Any further input? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. All right, moving forward, we have acceptance of the Planning Department's Special Projects Work Program. There's a commission-defined option that Commissioner Denson has submitted following our discussion last month. So I'll turn it to you, Commissioner.
Thank you. And yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the CDO.
I'll second.
All right, Commissioner, any further input?
Yes, and so this does really two things. This brings in line with what is realistically happening currently right now with policies addressing accessory dwelling units, which have been going through the mayor's Inclusionary Housing Task Force as a text amendment that would be coming, it's going before the planning commission in two days. And also, the policy discussion for short-term rentals, which is currently in Government Operations Committee right now. And so this CDO just simply moves those two items up to the current time for those policies to be completed here in the next couple of months and implemented in the beginning of 2023. Everything else is still in line with what the planning department put in place. So yeah, very happy and excited for this to move forward so that we can get acting on some short-term rental regulation and opening up some housing options by allowing accessory dwelling units move forward, if this body chooses to.
Commissioner Lin, any follow-up?
Yeah, I want to thank Commissioner Denson for pulling this together and recognizing the need to move this ADU ordinance up. I personally have multiple constituents who are interested in taking advantage of it. And I think that it can somewhat quickly bring some, hopefully, affordable units into our in-town neighborhoods specifically.
Thanks, Commissioner. And just as a process matter, of course, this doesn't, this item would not modify any ordinance text. The ADU question is right now in front of the planning commission, and that would come to us in the normal course of events. Commissioner Myers?
And really, in reality, the work, the work plan is there to pace out what the planning department is doing in a reasonable way. And your CDO is just saying, hey, these two things are ready to go anyway, so we're just matching this. And it really doesn't change the nature of the work for the planning, for the planning department. That vote that's going before the planning commission this month for the accessory dwelling units, would that then come to us in December? Is that the normal flow?
Correct, that's right.
Okay.
Commissioner Wright?
Yeah, I just, I'm not going to do a substitute motion to go with what staff has put forward because I think you guys have already gotten this to where you want to support it. But I don't support it, and I just want the message to go back to the planning commission that this wasn't unanimous. I feel that it's a little bit of the cart before the horse. These items, I know, are near and dear to you. And I get why you want to move them fast through the system right now. But I feel like the comprehensive plan, the five-year update, is 50% done. The growth concept map update is 30% done. And I think that staff's request to focus on these and have them done to help address locations and details that are tandem to these ideas that are coming forward under the single-family inclusionary zoning topics, which are at the 10% and 15% completion. And that topic in itself, single-family, is 0%. So I just think it's making, these are both really serious topics that need a lot of community engagement and discussion. The changing accessory, changing something in someone's backyard to a dwelling is a huge deal. I don't want our community to miss out on the input that I think is critical for us about that. And then with the government ops stuff on the short-term rental, that will go to planning out of government ops, is that correct? Or straight to us? So that'll be coming to us. And I think that that topic also could use planning, the planning commission's purview with that. So anyway, I'm not supporting the commission-friendly option for those reasons.
Commissioner Hou?
Thank you, Mayor. Question and then a thought. I just wanted to clarify with staff. I see that the CDO version Commissioner Denson put forth, you know, bumps a couple of things up as he described. But then there's this little nugget of purple line on the Gantt chart along item 10. That's like the general header of missing middle housing that's been removed. And I just wanted to confirm with staff, are we somehow dropping something in the CDO that was originally contemplated in the staff version? Or is that just an administrative correction that was made at the same time as the CDO? Or what? Do you see what I'm referring to there?
I think everybody's trying to magnify their PDF.
Yeah, yeah. I'm glad that I got these printed copies, very appreciated.
So Commissioner Hou, are you saying, what are you saying that was dropped?
So I believe it's line number 10. So the missing middle housing header, you know, that continues into February 23 from present day in the staff version. But then on the CDO version, it just ends today. Of course, then the CDO version adds in the bit about ADUs. And so I just wanted to confirm that we haven't somehow accidentally dropped something that staff was anticipating keeping going.
I don't know the answer to that. Certainly can get back to you on that one. In both cases, it has it on hold. So that's what has me a little bit confused. So I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, I'm assuming from what Commissioner Denson described and what we've heard from staff to this point, that we aren't losing anything. I just want to make sure that we're not. I guess, you know, I appreciate the work of staff and Commissioner Denson getting this before us today. I hear my colleagues' points about wanting to try to take things a step at a time. But I do feel like we've heard overwhelmingly from the community about issues of the housing crisis broadly. And that's 100% happening right now. And so I'm glad that these two things being worked on in tandem with those other policy changes, I think, will help make a small dent in that crisis. And I look forward to supporting this today.
And just as a process question, if there's a Scrivener's error, you know, that's something we can easily correct. But, you know, my understanding is that the intent, Commissioner Denson and the CDO, is not to lose any of the items, simply to adjust them in the calendar.
And I've just confirmed from planning staff that nothing will be lost. The three items under the missing middle will continue through implementation.
Okay.
Commissioner Davenport?
Thank you. So I want to fix on this one. I have heard concerns from people in District 1 and 8 about keeping neighborhoods intact with an addition of ADUs. And I prefer for us to go through that process. But I'm, you know, I'm open for, you know, discussion and change. Just, a lot of people buy homes out in the country for that peace and quiet. Yes, it gives people the option, this potential gives people the option of doing accessory dwelling in the backyard. But it also comes with a caveat of increased traffic noise and some of the nuisance involved in that. And like if it's in town, it kind of makes sense. But some of the country folks like to keep the country, country. But so this Thursday, and unfortunately, I've not looked at the planning department's agenda, it just, a text amendment changed to add a kitchen.
That's essentially the substance of moving from an outbuilding to an ADU is actually even more minutely the addition of a stove. But again, the substantive question is in front of the planning commission this Thursday, and will be in front of this body first Tuesday in December for that deeper discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Thornton?
I do like the concept of ADUs. I'm not going to support moving faster. I think if we, I think the things that we have hit in glitches is when we jump too fast. If this is already a discussion and the planning is working on this, I would really like to get their feedback before I make such a decision. Because, just because I like ADUs, it might not be the best thing for everybody. There's still only been a few people that I know of, I know of, that have even been engaged in this conversation. I know right now of a, and I mentioned it before, elderly lady. She has two units behind her house. Don't tell nobody. That she's housing folk, and she still has plenty of yard. But if we're going to do this right, and the other thing I need to go on record saying, I do not, I do not buy this concept of the missing middle. I do not buy it. It's just a trendy word for, I don't even want to say what for, but it does not, it does not take care of our housing issues as some people like us to think. So I'm going to pass on this. I'm going to wait for planning to give me more direction and, but I... I'm going to wait for planning to give me more direction and, but I do support ADUs. I do not support the concept of a missing middle.
Review my who has spoken list. I'm going to return to Commissioner Denson.
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, just want to, again, underline that all we're voting on tonight is this document where the accessory dwelling units text amendment is going to go through all of the usual public input and process of any text amendment would go through, starting this coming Thursday, for a public meeting with public input on it through the Planning, Planning Commission. And then, of course, it will come through here on the agenda setting. And of course, it will come again on the voting session. So no, no steps are being skipped there. And, and also, I want to clarify that right now, the accessory dwelling units are permitted in agricultural areas, just to point out on that one. So outside of agricultural zoning areas, they're already allowed. And yeah, and then just also want to clarify that missing middle makes no changes on this document. Everything outside of accessory dwelling and short-term rentals is exactly the same as the staff version. Those are the only two items that have been moved. They simply bring up, the work is already being done, it brings it up to current time now, instead of having accessory dwelling units happen in 2025 and having us wait to regulate short-term rentals until 2024. And I think if we talk to anybody here, number, I've heard from many, many constituents about the problems with short-term rentals happening, I don't think anybody wants us waiting years to address that regulation, especially since we have almost 1,000 short-term rentals happening currently right now as we speak, with, with the slope growing there. So I think that these things are, I think, near and dear to the community's needs in heart, and that's why they're being bumped up. And being able to do so, again, without having to actually move anything else off of the Planning Commission and the Planning Department's plate. So just wanted to clarify those points.
Got Commissioner Edwards?
I'll support this CDO because, I mean, if we wait two years to regulate short-term rentals, everybody's going to be grandfathered in. I mean, we're going to be the last municipality in the nation to regulate short-term rentals. So I really don't see the point in pushing this farther down the road. So for that reason, it makes sense to me that this work plan would flow out of the work that the GOC has already done, so I plan to support it. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers, follow-up?
My comments have been made already.
Okay. Commissioner Hul?
Same.
Okay. All right. Cooks, Breitlin, got a motion from Commissioner Denson, second from Commissioner Link, if you do a roll call.
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
No.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Wright?
No.
Two no, seven yes.
All right. Thank you. Motion carries. All right, we're moving on to item 15, which is the Atlanta Highway Corridor Improvements Project. It includes Mitchell Bridge Road and Timothy Road. And these are the proposed project concepts, the first of a couple of steps that we take when we deploy a T-SLOSS project.
Did you skip item 14, Commissioner?
Oh, I did. Thank you. Yes, my list of commissioners who spoke on the last item was long enough that I had to move into the next line. Item 14 is the 2022 HUD Continuum of Care Homeless Assistance Grant Approval, and this is an annual approval item. Commissioner?
Second.
All right. I've got a motion from Commissioner Hul, second from Commissioner Thornton. Any thought, Commissioner Hul?
I just wanted to appreciate staff of both county government, as well as the Athens Air Home Shelter, and following up on my questions from the last meeting and those regarded kind of wages and the services that have been able to be expanded. They have been able to expand their capacity and also their ability to pay their staff better as a result of this funding, so I'm looking forward to moving forward on this. I do also hope that we can see in the years ahead, the years ahead, an additional heightening of the wage floor for their part-time staff, but I'm excited to support this tonight.
Follow-up, Commissioner Thornton?
No, I have no comment.
All right. Any further input on this item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Hearing none, motion carries, and we move forward. All right, now to T-SLOSS 2018, Project 15. Anyone like to make a motion regarding this? Commissioner Hamby?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. And I'm going to make a motion to, to hold, and I'll explain why, once, if there's a second.
Second.
All right, I got a motion to hold from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Hul. Right ahead.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. There's a few reasons why to hold this. One being that I know the final agenda report with all the numbers and all the sort of options at the agenda setting, it was listed as to be determined, but the final component of it came out on Friday. So I think it's incumbent and prudent of, especially Commissioner Hul and myself, to make sure that the folks along this corridor truly understand the concept and, and understand what to expect if this indeed does pass. I'm supportive of a multi-use approach for, for these dollars and for this, but we also want to make sure, and Commissioner Hul and I can get together, along with perhaps Derek Doster and Blaine and Andrew Williams, to discuss, you know, what additional dollars that may be needed to extend it further, further down the road. No pun intended, but, or I don't even know if it was a pun, but at any rate, from, from that standpoint. But I think just the point of being able to communicate with residents along there about what to expect and hear any concerns that they may have, based on what we received on Friday, and, and looking to see, to see if anything additional needs to be added to it. So that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Hul, any additional comments?
Yeah, good puns, keeping it rolling. I echo my colleague's sentiments on this. I really appreciate the work that's been done by staff and, and also our unpaid resident advisors to, to get us what we've got before us. I definitely have a number of questions, primarily surrounding three main things. The first being how we're going to fund the things that are not contemplated as being captured by T-SLOSS 2023, most especially the bridge on Mitchell Bridge Road over the loop. And so some questions around how we would effectively engage GDOT in that process, what that timeline would look like, and whether we need to be allocating funds upfront to get that ball rolling now, in order to even see any kind of progress within the next five or 10 years. Because GDOT has an extensive, precise process that takes a lot of time and often requires matching funds. The next is, I'm really curious to understand how the proposed priorities here match with the adjacent, you could say, infrastructure and plans. So there's a Greenway Master Plan, and there are these plans for Tallahassee Road and Atlanta Highway. But there's also these amenities like Ben Burton Park. And I'm especially puzzled by the section of Mitchell Bridge that's being recommended that doesn't connect to any of those things, so I'd just like to better understand the rationale for that. So, so yeah, for those reasons. And then, and then the third, the third thing is just, I'd like to better understand how the user group and staff were thinking about the future funding when they were mapping out these priorities, and how much there was a clear understanding of what was going to come next when, given the limits that we have here. Because I too would love to see multi-use everywhere, but recognizing that that costs much more than just sidewalks, really having a clear understanding of whether we're talking about 10 years or 20 years, and whether it makes sense to put, you know, this in now here versus maybe something else sooner if we are going to go multi-use.
All right, so there is a motion and a second to hold. Commissioner Thornton?
I did receive calls to support this proposal. And what I did, and what I always do, is try to reach out to other people we don't hear from. Residents in Berkeley Hill did not even know that this was going to impact their area and their neighborhood. I think postponing and making sure people who normally don't get the information, they're not tuning into us, at least know what's going on and give an opportunity for input. I have no problem with the actual proposal, I don't think, but I do want to make sure that people know what is going to impact them, one way or the other, good or bad. So I would, I'm going to go with the motion.
Commissioner Myers?
Yeah. I'm supporting the motion as well to table it and have some, a couple of questions that I've shared already with Manager Williams, but I'd like to share them as well. I'll start off by saying that actually, over the years, months, and years of discussion here, I am more convinced that putting the multi-use trail along this corridor that is a connector, despite its increased course cost over sidewalk, is really the, thinking the long range. So I am supportive of that. But I did have a couple of questions, and one was in terms of community input. I noticed that there was an area that's actually the second tier that goes from the Timothy Church area down to the neighborhoods to Glen, where does that go on that? But it doesn't, it, it was all very vague, and it just said it'll go through here. And so I wasn't quite sure why we were moving that on to a neck, to the next phase with, when it was so vague to begin with, and concerned on that one that would go through the neighborhood or might. And it might go through for a really good reason, because topography-wise, that's a very steep descent there. But I wasn't, you know, I need to understand how the neighbors have been involved in that. Also, as it's stated on the agenda report, we're moving all of the items, all the tiers, from the project concept to the preliminary plan phase. And it's, I think I need a clear understanding of what the present funding strategies are. And if Tier 2 and Tier 3, as I think, are way out in the future, I'm not sure, I need to be convinced that investing in the preliminary plan phase, which is much more detailed, is the thing to do now, when 10 years or 15 years from now, another commission may change the nature of this project. And those are, those are basically my concerns about this, and why I'm supporting delaying it for tabling it.
For one month.
Yeah, for one month.
All right. And so I think staff will follow up on those questions.
Yes, if I could, just to help you all, if this passes, for you to be thinking about, so a couple of things on history number 18. So there was a CDO that asked for all of this, and that's why you got all of this. This is more than what you're accustomed to, and it's a lot, you know, to digest on, on short notice. The other thing I wanted to answer Commissioner Myers' most recent question, on facts and issues 15, I believe it is. Just bear with me one second, let me scroll down there.
There's a lot.
So there is a lot, and, and staff did try to, to parse through that, to tell you in 15, that they would recommend that the two must-haves, a shared use path on the southern side of Timothy, between Skyline and Timothy, and a shared use path along the northern side of Mitchell Bridge Road, between Auburn Parkway and High Ridge, those would be the two that would get advanced. Those are must-haves. Those would go to preliminary plans. The rest of them are there in the wings. If there was money left over after this, then you could put those towards additional concept development for preliminary plans. And then there's also the new T-SLOSS funds, but we'll answer those questions where the funding will come from, but that's why we're kind of where we are. But there are two priorities, if you will, of the concepts that would advance.
Yeah, and following up on that one, just, and following up on Commissioner Hul's point about the section of the Mitchell Bridge Road one, and I see that it's a lower price. When I look here at number 15, it's at 1.7 million. But at this point, it is not connecting to any public parks, commercial areas. And I realize we're bounded in that stretch by the bridge over the bypass and the bridge over the river in that way. So for me to be supportive of this part, I need that clearer understanding of how we're going to connect that. I don't want to build something. And that might be buried in here somewhere, or it could be clarified.
Well, and I guess that, that would be another reason why you would have all of these concepts in front of you, to kind of understand how it all works together, and then we prioritize a couple of segments to build on. But we can respond to that.
Haven't heard from Commissioner Denson yet, and then I'll circle back to others.
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, I think Commissioner Myers presented a lot of my questions and my reservations. I guess a little bit would be about, yeah, if, I definitely support the multi-use trail, but if the multi-use trail isn't going to be able to connect anything for 15 years, maybe it does make more sense to do a sidewalk that can go fully connected for something for a while. And my other question that hasn't been addressed yet is, I mean, so my understanding really, right, is that these, I understand the concepts going forward, but if the construction of these concepts would be dependent upon T-SLOSS 2022 funding, even the, even the two must-haves, correct, on the Tier 1? And, and so if, so with that being, that being the case, I guess, I, I wonder if these things are going to need to be approved again by the T-SLOSS 2022 Oversight Committee, which hasn't even been formulated yet. So it kind of feels like all of this is kind of really getting ahead of ourselves in some, in some ways, but yeah.
Well, I, I, thank you. And I'd love to speak to Oversight Committee. We're trying to answer the commission's charge to get things done, and so we're moving things along. We don't want to gloss over any necessary steps. And you're absolutely right on the SLOSS Oversight Committee, and I want to point out Commissioner Wright for, for bringing up an important point that doesn't happen all the time. So on January 1, we're going to have new district lines, no news to y'all. So what we're thinking is, with the exception of this, there hasn't been anything else really to put before them, that we have produced, Commissioner Wright astutely asked, well, what does that look like with the existing oversight people and where they live? So that the commissioners can make decisions that honor the spirit of what we've done in the past, our tradition of including people geographically from around the county on the Oversight Committee. So we've gone through the trouble of going ahead and mapping out where the past citizen advisory folks live, so you, for instance, wouldn't get two people out of one district. And then our thought was to consult with the new commissioners-elect and the commissioners that take office, and allow them to make the ask of who they would like to have on the Oversight Committee, of course, through Mayor Gertz. So we are ready to share those maps, and that we would tee that up to where the new commission would own the new, everything would be consistent with the new district maps.
And just to distinguish the Oversight Committee from the user group, the Oversight Committee really is just asking the question, does this project meet the letter of the referendum? Whereas the user group is more specifically diving into the, to the context of a project and the concepts, and making recommendations about that. So one is very high-level and one's a little more detail-oriented.
And if I might, Mayor, just add this to you, just for everybody watching. So every SLOSS, T-SLOSS has a citizens advisory committee that's appointed by the mayor and commission, two people from each district, there's 22 folks, and they're the ones that do the yeoman's job of going to a million meetings and hearing what the aspirations of the community are, recommending the projects to the commission. Then they disband. Then, when, if it's approved, there's an Oversight Committee, and what our tradition has been, is for the commissioners to select one of the two people that was on the advisory committee to serve on the Oversight, to do as the mayor said, thumbs up, thumbs down, is this consistent? And their institutional knowledge, having gone through the process, is very valuable to understanding if we're honoring the intent that was originally proposed.
All right. Commissioner Hamby?
Sure. And Mayor, I just want to make, make sure, though, that, that this new, it would be a new T-SLOSS group that's been formed, that would be formed for T-SLOSS 22, that, I think the current existing body ought to choose one of the two that they appointed to be on that T-SLOSS. So I guess by December, perhaps, maybe we can, we can make that happen. I mean, they were appointed under the current lines, and they can serve.
And those pennies are being collected as we speak.
And serve under the current lines.
Is that correct?
I think.
Yes.
So that's, that's preferably the way I would like to, to approach this.
Well, I'll defer to the mayor. I think Commissioner Hamby's saying that the sitting commission should select the members.
At least, you know, each of us appointed one of the two, so it's only right that the sitting commission chooses one of the two that they.
That, that's, that's fair to me, and I think we can also make that happen in a way that reflects the breadth of geography of the community.
I think so. Yeah, yeah. Most, I mean, I'm thinking of the two members that are appointed live on Timothy Road anyway, so I don't have a problem.
With that direction, Mayor, then, what we'll do is we'll disseminate the maps that show where the existing members live, and then depend on y'all to tell the mayor your preference, and as is custom for the mayor to finalize the, the list.
Thank you. GIS. Commissioner Hul?
Yeah, just to try to put a nice bow on this, you know, as far as I can tell, at this phase, there's kind of two main things we've got to decide. Do we want to build more path, but then it's sidewalk, or less path, but then it's multi-use? And then where do we want to start? And I feel like I'm getting a pretty strong understanding from what we've heard from the user group, that the preference is to do multi-use. But where I'm particularly puzzled is the choice of where to start. And I'm much less familiar with the specific. And I'm much less familiar with the specific needs of Timothy Road than I am with Mitchell Bridge, based on districts. I'm sure Commissioner Hamby is much more familiar with Timothy Road. But when I think about Mitchell Bridge, connecting two neighborhoods that don't otherwise connect to anything and are already connected to each other off the main road doesn't make anywhere near as much sense to me as connecting, say, Westchester to the park and maybe continuing from there up the road as far as we can get and are putting money towards making one of the bridges safer. So, you know, that's kind of specifically where my thinking's at, at least in this meeting. I'd like to get some more information on that. I'm also thinking about the other T-SLOSS projects we have on 2023, and there is one for Westchester, and so those might dovetail quite well. So it's with all that in mind that I'm looking to consider some tweaks to this recommendation, even though I very much appreciate the work that's been done.
Commissioner Thornton.
I was just going to correct myself. I did speak, I know that Berkeley is not in the, the main scheme of things, but there is a concern when I mentioned I spoke to someone in Berkeley Hills. But the other person does live on Shalfat Lane that had some concerns in Commissioner Hul's district. So again, I just think making sure we get enough people, diverse group of people to have input, I think is always a good thing.
All right, so there is a motion to hold for one cycle till the first Tuesday in December. Motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Hul. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll talk more and have some time to engage with staff around some of these details.
And Mayor, if I might, I want to encourage everybody to please email me your specific questions, and we will catalog them all in one report and send it to you to try to get, make sure we're answering your questions.
Great. Thanks, Manager Williams, I appreciate that. All right, item 16 is T-SLOSS 2018, Project Six, the Firefly Trail, and this is sub-project Six, right-of-way acquisition, motion for eminent domain resolution. Do entertain a motion at this point regarding this item.
Mayor, I know this is a touchy subject. I would like to motion to hold it for, to the next cycle. Here's the reason why. I've spoken with the resident, they understand that the trail is coming, and I thank staff, and I know it's frustrating for staff, a very interesting subject, but, and I thank Blaine for his, the email that he sent out, but just the residents feel that they need more time to breathe on this issue. If you look at the email that Blaine sent out earlier today, they had a meeting on September 16th and the 19th with the plans, where the trail was going to go, that was sent to the residents, and there was a notification almost a month later, October 4th, that notified the, that notified the residents of where the trail was going, and they, and unfortunately, the families, the residents were not able to meet, but they do understand that that trail is coming, they just, the word imminent domain for any resident in Nassau County or whoever is, is a very sensitive subject, and these individuals just would like to have a little bit more time to speak with staff of their concerns and making sure that the process is equitable and fair.
All right, there's a motion to hold. Is there a second?
Second.
I've got a motion, a second from Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Thornton, any follow-up?
No, I think that Commissioner Davenport said it appropriately. Imminent domain is, is serious business, and I think that holding it for 30 days, if this is the route we're going to take, shows a bit of humanity on our part. 30 days should not make such a big difference when we're talking about something that is very, very permanent. So that's, that's my, my point of view.
Commissioner Wright.
Yeah, I appreciate the extra time on this because of the, it's private property, it's government asking to do something for the good of the whole community, which is, these people have made it clear it's not good for them. What I was hope is that we could learn from lessons in the community and take this time and give them some compassion, some empathy, some discussions about what accommodations can be made with the trail coming through, as well as discussions on how the compensation for the changes in their property from this is going to be happening. And I think that these are all details that they deserve to be hearing before we move in the direction that this agenda item takes us. And so that that shows them that we are learning from the past and trying to make this a compassionate and empathetic situation that's really tough. So I'm for this hold and the outreach that I hope that staff can make and that these property owners can reflect back to us that they have had some outreach that's helping them palatable with this.
Commissioner Edwards.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a substitute motion that we approve the resolution.
All right, we've got a substitute motion from Commissioner Edwards for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we've got a second from Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Edwards, any input?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This project is 20 years coming. There's certainly been a tremendous amount of notice and investment by this entire community behind it. And I know we have some residents who've been working with staff, and I have every confidence that staff has been doing the job, we've entrusted them to do it. I have no indication to the contrary, but I, what I do know from the agenda packet is that we have some property owners that are not included in this discussion who simply have said, no, no way, no how, until you show us a resolution, then go away, get off my property. So we've certainly been working collaboratively with some residents closer to Winterville. We've had a great conversation, I've been out there myself. But we'll never get 100% agreement on any project, honestly, and sure, sure enough, on this one, we have some folks who have simply said, no, go away, until you have this resolution, get off my property, get out of here. So, Mr. Mayor, this project is very important for our community, the millions of dollars of taxpayer investment that's already gone into it. Look at the bridges that we're building, the old Murmur Trestle Bridge currently going up, another bridge, tens of millions of dollars of investment. So now's the time to move forward and show that this community is going to do right on the commitment of past taxpayer dollars and investment. And honestly, Mr. Mayor, a part of me believes that this really will be the conclusion of the Firefly Trail. Looking at all of the work we've done here in Athens Clark County, I'm very proud. However, I have some reservations whether or not Oglethorpe County is going to be able to carry the mantle. So I feel like this is a tremendously important step for this entire region, that we finish this route from Athens to Winterville and really do the best we can to conclude this trail. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Myers.
Yeah, I want to clarify that this resolution tonight does not, it's not a resolution, a resolution for implementing eminent domain. If you look in the resolution, it's, it directs the United, Unified Government of Athens Clark County and its employees and agents to negotiate for and acquire the property needed for this project by gift, sale, or condemnation. That's the last step, and we have evidence that the county and the staff have made, have already started reaching out in a respectful way. We hear the people who were coming last week saying they're willing to work with us. I've seen dates where that's going to be happening. Nothing is happening next week. And if it does, I just want to reiterate, what we're talking about is eminent domain for a 20-foot wide trail in the abandoned railroad bed that we voted on way back when. So I have, from all the review of the documents from staff that we've received, I feel pretty reassured that our staff has been reaching out to the residents, will continue to reach out, and that we're just allowing this process to go forward. Nothing, no one is getting any sort of legal requirement of eminent domain tomorrow. This is, this is a process that we'll be going through. And therefore, I, because of my just, you know, commitment to this and the community's commitment to this, want to see this move forward.
Commissioner Denson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And, yeah, I guess I just want to get some clarification. I looked over the, the email that Manager Williams sent out earlier that Commissioner Davenport referenced, and so, yeah, my, my understanding of this is that, kind of like Commissioner Myers said, is that this, this is not going to start eminent domain, this is kind of going to start the appraisal process and voluntary negotiation process and such with the parcel owners. Right, so that, this is more of what's going to be starting now, and then this eminent domain will happen only after, I think, what was, what does the resolution say? Only and after legal counsel's opinion that all voluntary, voluntary participation efforts have been exhausted.
Commissioner Link.
Yeah, I mean, it was my understanding that staff doesn't even have the authority to begin eminent domain procedures until we vote on this issue. And that's only the first step to begin those initial property acquisition processes, which begin with appraisals. And I recall, you know, many on this body, meeting with these residents at the site and walking the trail almost three years ago. And some of us met and walked it on our own multiple times since then. You know, this is a process that has been going on for three years now, and there's been a lot of input and a lot of struggles over it. But I feel like there, there's been plenty of information shared and plenty of communication. And it was always, in my mind, it was always the intent for all kinds of allotments to be made, such as fencing and plantings and all the kinds of things that would protect these properties from, you know, any kind of intrusion they might feel from this trail. On a personal note, you know, I have a friend who bought a house that backed up to what was an industrial wasteland, which is now the Belt Line in Atlanta, and it has transformed his life in a positive way. He's lost 30 pounds because he walks on the Belt Line every day. His property values are much higher. He's expanded his social network. You know, I, I think that it's short-sighted to overlook the vast benefits that this trail will bring to these property owners.
Returning to Commissioner Davenport.
Thank you, Thornton. So I just want to be clear that the residents I've been speaking to of Carney Lake, they understand that the trail is coming, it's coming, they are not objecting to the trail. As I, and I just want to be clear, I support the Flyfly Trail, I think they're a great asset for Nassau County, our voters voted for it. And the residents just feel that they were sent plans of revision of where the trail was going to go, the next thing we know, next thing they knew, they read in the paper, imminent domain. It is our government duty, regardless if it's been 20 years or not, Mr. Mayor, regardless of the fact that the people have been voting and talking about this for some time, for us to do our due diligence for the residents who've been paying taxes in this county for 30 years. They bought their property, and all they're asking, just from a little sympathy, just to let, let the county know, for the county to show them some little bit of respect that when this trail proceeds, that they're going to lose some property. That's all they're asking.
Commissioner Thornton.
Thank you, Mayor. It's, I know nobody wants to make the connection to Lenin Town, and I'm not going to do that. But I, there was one slide that was presented about Lenin Town, and it showed how property values escalated from there, from, from then into now. So if we pay people what their property is worth now, what about 20 years from now? What is that property going to be worth? 50 years from now, we should be paying folk as property values go up if we're going to take their property. And nobody talks about that. Yes, we're, it's going, we're going to get a sweet deal, but property values are going to grow, and people's, they're going to get that one-time check, and the value of the land is going to increase. We need to have a conversation. What does that look like 20 years from now, 30 years from now? I think we're robbing people if we don't take those kind of calculations into consideration. My point, nobody's ever brought this up before, just came to me.
Commissioner Hamby.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I just see on the email here that Manager Williams sent out today that it looks like the group is meeting on, the group in, in the neighborhood that Commissioner Davenport's referring to is meeting on November 9th to review plans and the next steps. And I don't really see any harm in waiting to see what happens at that meeting and for us to decide at our next meeting where we go from here. You know, like you said, it's been, it's not like they're going to start laying the trail down next week. It has been 12 years, so I don't, I don't see any harm in, in waiting, waiting 30 days for us to see if the neighbors can come together with, with our staff and everybody walks away knowing that the trail is coming, and everybody walks away knowing, knowing that their, that they, that their property is going to be protected and, and they get what they want to help make it protected.
Commissioner Wright.
Yeah, yeah, I, just from hearing the different feedback and, you know, with all due respect, Commissioner Edwards, I get it that, I mean, your stern approach with this, but I think that for us to engage and hope for this trail to continue in our surrounding counties, I think we should be showing some empathy towards the property owners so that the current properties that are going through this, not wanting it, but accepting it, give them time, give them empathy as this goes along, versus them showing up in Oglethorpe County and saying, don't do it, they're going to declare eminent domain on you. And this, I think we should show a good example of how the trail can move forward, which I think this time can help with that and help us give the surrounding counties a good example of how to do this, so that the trail can grow outside of our boundaries.
Commissioner Davenport.
Just to repeat again, the resident, they know the trail is coming, they just, the word imminent domain, they would just like to, to soak that in and to speak with staff on the night.
All right, there is a substitute motion on the floor from Commissioner Edwards, second from Commissioner Myers. If you could do a roll call.
Edwards?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
No.
Hamby?
No.
Davenport?
No.
Link?
Yes.
Wright?
No.
Denson?
Yes.
Hul?
Yes.
Five yes, four no.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Motion carries. All right, item 17 is the Classic Center Arena. This is SLOSS Project 2020, number three, and it's the proposed project concept for the Hickory Street parking deck and the proposed contract change order, number two. Entertain a motion regarding this item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, got a second from Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Hamby, any follow-up?
No, sir.
Commissioner Myers.
I do have a follow-up. Basically, on this, we're voting yes for the proposed project concept and the site selection criteria on version A, but it will be brought back with us with the final financing before we vote on a, on the work happening. Is that correct?
Yes. You'll vote on schematic design at the December meeting is the plan, if you approve the concept.
Okay. So we're, right now, we're just, it's on the site selection and the project concept. That's what, all we're voting on tonight.
So, and again, just to make sure, we were talking about the Classic Center Arena.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're, the things tonight are, and they're, they're multiple, and it is, I really appreciate y'all, we've got a lot of different projects that are complicated, and they're complicated by a lot of external factors. So tonight, you're asking to approve the proposed concept, and you had approved a previous version of this, but it was a different size deck and under different circumstances, so we felt prudent to come back to you. So you'll approve that, authorize it to go to schematic design, approve a not-to-see-change order, because assuming that you approve the concept, then there would be more design that's required, especially in a compressed timeframe that is being suggested here, to go ahead and, and change order in the architect's final, all the way through construction documents of the deck. And then thirdly, direct the manager and attorney to begin work on provisions for a special tack. a special tax district that will surround that area. So that's tonight, and then, of course, there are follow-on actions in December, January, and probably February.
I guess what I'm looking at is the, I guess it's the last part, the gray area in the history where the Classic Center Authority voted to recommend support A, you know, then it has all these different options here. And it says, point two is that the project funding cannot be funded, fully funded, as outlined on the project funding page. We recommend that project continue work towards the implementation of option A so long as, and it gives a list. And it says, if need, three, if neither of the two above items are feasible, we recommend to the mayor this other option. So we'll be deciding on that later.
Well, the recommendation, my understanding, baked into the concept is A. So there's a bridge and a stair that goes across. So that would be what, if you affirm the concept as presented, that was a preference of the user group, and that's what will continue in the design towards schematics.
Okay, and then maybe it's just this, maybe perhaps Director Paul Kramer can explain this to me afterwards to some degree, but it does seem like there is this option that was voted on last week that they were recommending that I don't see reflected. If, I don't know if that is confusing to anyone else besides me.
Do you want to ask directly for Director Kramer to address?
Mayor, I would greatly appreciate that.
Do you mind, Director? Thanks, Mr. Kramer, for being here.
No, thank you for asking me.
And just to repeat the question, Commissioner Myers?
I think I have it.
Yeah, and it's also mentioned in eight of the facts and issues as well. So it's these grayed-out areas that are adding another level of complexity to.
Sure. So beyond a shadow of a doubt, what the board voted to do was to go with A, to build out the entirety of the parking deck. But as there are still a number of issues that are up in the air, because you all have not yet approved the tax allocation district, you have not yet approved the special district, there are things that you have not yet fully approved. So all they were suggesting is that by far and away, they would like for you to approve the bridge, the stair tower, the deck, the elevator, the whole piece in option A. But if, for whatever reason, that was not feasible, then at a minimum, they recognize we need the bridge over Hickory, the stair tower, and the elevator, was basically what all of that is trying to say.
Okay, so we're, I think I have it fine enough to go ahead and vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Commissioner Myers, you good?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay. Commissioner Denson?
I guess just, yeah, just to put the pin on that and just make sure I understand too. So that, which Director Kramer just went over and what's in, yeah, history 43, that is the concept that we are voting on as option A? That is, that isn't, that is, okay, yeah. I don't think that was completely clear either, so I agree with that. So, all right, I'm good.
All right. Any further questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. And again, we will see this in the schematic phase very soon.
And then next month, you'll be asked to vote on a number of issues that are outlined in Facts and Issues 11, just giving you a glimpse. It's a fast-moving project. And just for everybody out there, the press here is not to try and fly under the radar. It's to trying to get that parking deck out of the ground at the same time the Classic Center Arena comes online, and that's the urgency.
All right. Moving on to item 18, this is the SPOS 2020 Project One, Facility Space Modernization Project, alternately known as the Judicial Facility Plus Existing Space Renovation. And this is for the Judicial Center, the project concept and site selection criteria. Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Hamby, any follow-up?
No, I think we've had two work sessions on this, so I'm pretty clear on it. Commissioner.
I totally agree. We've talked about this a lot. Thank you.
All right. Any further input? Commissioner Myers?
I will put further input because I see that my last comments were confusing 17 and 18, although I recovered from that in there. So, yes, on this one, it's the site selection and project concept that we're voting on right now. I segued the other one into my main point, but that was confusing, so I apologize for that.
All right, and of course, just as we've seen in work sessions for the public, you know, we would begin to develop that concept when we've got a site. And Commissioner Davenport's been generous enough to serve on that committee, so some more work to be done. All right, so there's a motion and a second. Any further input? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We move forward. All right, number 19 is yet another project of the SPOS 2020 referendum, number 25, the Eastside Library Project. And this is similarly the proposed project concept and proposed site selection criteria.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Thornton, second from Commissioner Myers.
And I have comment. So the site selection.
Mr. Myers, go right ahead.
Well, I chaired the site selection committee for this project. I do want to say that the site selection criteria, this is, I think, a really good example of where the site selection criteria have evolved from the public input. And in fact, we had, this was very impressive to me, 285 public surveys were filled in on the Eastside Library. And that's, I'm not in competition, but that's, that is, in contrast to the 50 for the Judicial Center. So some of the criteria were evolved, and we also expanded the geographical area to go over to Peter Street as well. So I am really appreciative of the work of the site selection committee, the user group, and actually, all those people who've shown up at the public meetings and filled out those surveys. So I'm happy to support this.
Great, thanks, Commissioner. And of course, the public are understandably excited about another significant library branch in this community, as am I. Commissioner Davenport?
I just want to, people are more interested in that library than the Judicial Center.
I can tell you one that I'll enjoy going to and one that I will not. All right, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. All right, item 20 was by title only when we met at our agenda-setting meeting, and this is designation of $500,000 of American Rescue Plan Act funds for summer 2023 youth programming, understanding that the earlier we get started on this, the earlier we're able to do a good sweep of the community and create those opportunities in a substantive way for our young folks. So is there a motion on this?
Jesse's up first, I'll second.
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve. I do have a couple of questions.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Hool. All right, got a second from Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Hool, go right ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, I mostly just wanted to check in, I guess, kind of broadly speaking, and I see the language in the facts and issues here embedded in the document, but just wanted to invite staff, or perhaps you, Mayor Gertz, to elaborate briefly on how this proposal moving forward will align with some of the discussion we had in our retreat last week about sort of, you know, modifying what we did last summer to kind of build a bridge between the very temporary and rushed fashion of last summer to the more focused and specifically addressing violence prevention components of this ARPA bucket that we've been trying to move toward in a more thoughtful fashion.
I'll make a couple of notes, and then Manager Williams or Assistant Manager Jones may want to follow up. You know, last summer, we, I think, kind of late in the game, recognized that, given the dynamics of the pandemic and its effect on youth in this community, and of course, all across the country, we wanted to make sure that there were additional funds allocated for summer programming. Given that we were on a rushed timeframe, that meant that the nonprofit community who were applying for those funds and we who were reviewing those applications and ultimately awarding, just had to move very rapidly. We even used some staff who typically wouldn't be reviewing applications from nonprofits and leisure services to do that work, and so we're grateful to them. This go-round, we have learned from that, both in terms of being able to tee up the nonprofits and in terms of being able to, you know, somewhat create some parameters around the size of funding. And so you'll see that there's a floor funding of at least $30,000 and a ceiling funding of $100,000 for this programming. There is, as was last time the case, kind of a variety of prospective activities that we would do with youth. That includes some academic work, that includes prospectively some academic work, some other things that you see outlined in the agenda report. What I do anticipate is that what we will see in the coming month is further attention to our partnership with the Clark County School District. I did meet with Superintendent Hooker last week, who is very aware that we would like a substantive partnership, to be a multi-year partnership that also brings in the nonprofit and grassroots community. But everybody understands that these things take some time and attention, and we want summer 2023 to be very successful for our young people. So those are some of the procedural questions. I don't know if Manager Williams or Assistant Manager Jones, you have any other notes you'd like to add?
No, other than, we do appreciate the lead time, and we did hearken back to the language of the CDO that helped put this together. Now, that direction on, you know, decreasing involvement in violence and increasing the well-being of youth was really targeted at the plan that we would develop from the Clark County School District as a partner. That was named as part of that CDO, but the tenants remain the same. And so we've tried to reflect in what some eligible activities might be that really speak back to youth programming and violence prevention. And I think this is an opportunity to deploy those funds while we try to work through a bigger, more strategic plan for the community, with the community, and the school district.
I really appreciate that. May I use just a couple more seconds?
Please.
So the second question I had, and then just a thought after, is, you know, the RFP for this will release on January 9th of 2023. My understanding is that the deadline for submissions is a very hard, concrete deadline of February 8th, 2023. But in that period in between, could you maybe just share if and how staff may avail themselves to review, say, an initial submission to give feedback for someone to strengthen their submission before that deadline?
Well, we, certainly staff will be available for any technical assistance, and, you know, we could even offer, as we do with CDBG sometimes, you know, invitation for people to come in and ask questions and learn more about it. We certainly can give feedback to produce a complete application.
Yeah, I know you all did that fantastic kind of rundown for folks on CDBG just a couple of weeks ago. Do you anticipate doing something similar to that, because this is a different type of funding? Yeah?
Assistant Manager Jones says yes.
Okay, so people can kind of keep their, people can keep their eyes peeled with the posting for when that'll be, basically. Well, my only parting remark on this, and I'm excited to move forward on this, I thank everybody for their work on it, is just when whatever team is evaluating these proposals is evaluating these proposals, to think of weighing heavily the criteria that is more connected to the longer-term vision around violence prevention when evaluating the proposals that come forth. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Wright, any follow-up?
Yeah, I want to applaud this coming forward in this timeframe that we are, because by the time these are evaluated and we approve them on April 4th, then our community members will know what's being offered and can start targeting and sharing it with parents and children and getting that. I think one, I think the whole community knows that we can't move fast enough and we can't do too much for the youth intervention that needs to be happening right now with the violence, youth violence is just, anything we can do to intervene as well, there's different layers of things that need to be done, and I hope we can support all of those that are going to be coming forward. And in that, I hope that we will be having our meeting, that we'll learn soon rather than later, how the school districts doing their ARPA allocation, so that we can use the best resources for the whole community.
And that's an important note about families preparing for the summer, too. One of the things that surprised me when I became a parent was how far back I needed to plan my summer and my child's summer.
Usually before spring break. I think leisure services has got their things in a row. But yeah, it's a lot of planning, a lot of early.
Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, again, I'm really glad this is coming up now for this much, much more reasonable timeline for all involved, from families to the providers to the staff that are putting this together. I think the program last summer, despite all its hiccups, was really successful and reached out to a whole lot of kids. The point I'd like to reiterate, and I don't know the criteria for ranking as well, but was a point that Commissioner Hool made about the evaluation process tying back to this. And I think, I mean, it became clear that the applicants this year were the ones who really were doing the work that we anticipated doing it. But I would hope, you know, we have an earlier deadline here, and I just want to make sure that if it's the Green Acres Dolphin program being expanded in my neighborhood that is a solid, you know, middle-class professional neighborhood, that that doesn't get as many points as ones who are dealing with kids who are in underserved neighborhoods or with parents with less resources. So I'm assuming that there's something in the criteria that we use. Is that, is that the case?
If.
Oh. Perhaps the mayor could.
I don't believe in the last iteration that we had any income requirements as part of this.
No, although, you know, we did have some post-program evaluation that indicated that north of 80% of the clients were low-income families.
Yeah, right. And that was great.
And you said middle-class. Treasury guidelines make real clear it's supposed to be underserved and census tracks. So that cuts you out already.
Well, I know that there was a nod to lower, lower-income families, and 80% were, and then I think 90% of the persons served were minority as well.
Those, that's part of the Treasury guidelines. We are talking about ARPA, right?
Yes, correct.
Any other input before I return to Commissioner Hool? Commissioner?
Yeah, the only thing I'll add, it kind of, I'm not just talking about populations served, although that is an important component. I think that's more obviously baked into this and has been all along. But specifically, you know, different organizations are going to bring forward proposals that define their outcomes. And if we choose to weigh more heavily the organizations that are doing work based around defining outcomes that include prevention of violence or reduction of engagement with the criminal justice system or, you know, whatever other parallel to the criminal justice system agencies we might identify, those, in my mind, more closely match the spirit of the long-term vision of this funding, and therefore, in my mind, would be best heavily emphasized in the evaluation. Because we're almost certainly going to get, you know, proposals that exceed the amount available, or we're trying to whittle down who to give the funding to. I think the folks who are already doing work that aligns with that long-term vision are probably the ones that we want to be trying to help bolster.
And I would say, too, I think that that was part of the admonition from the commission that we do already established programs and expand them.
Commissioner Thornton?
I'm agreeing with Commissioner Hool about outcomes, and I've been harping on this. And I think it also, I think the RFP should, it shouldn't mandate what an outcome specifically, because some groups may do some great stuff that we don't think about. But if there are some key issues or key points, such as gangs and, I think we should be a little clearer what we're looking for as an outcome. That's when, I don't even know how I'm saying that, but we know what, people who write these proposals may do some great work, but they do not know the issues that we're facing in this community. So I hope we give some clear thought or more thought to what we're looking for, so people are not all over the page.
I'd point to some of the language in the report that I think frames this well. It notes that with an eye toward the mayor-commission mandate for funding efforts to support youth development and violence prevention, programs will be asked to focus on one or more of the following that seek to increase the well-being of youth and decrease involvement in violence, and those would include academic support, crisis intervention, cultural enrichment, counseling, juvenile justice services, recreational activities, life skills, outreach services, substance abuse prevention, youth employment, or youth leadership. So I think what the, the community, we're saying is, you know, we're not interested in frolicking in the woods or necessarily doing cool things around arts in and of themselves. We're interested We're interested in this, this set of means to an end.
And I do think that's the route we need to be going with all of our, everything we vote on, outcomes, and they're really clear. So I'm good with that.
Well, Mayor, if I might?
Please.
So obviously, youth programming, violence prevention is something that you never achieve. You know, you do it, and you continue to do it, and do it, do it. So from a violence prevention standpoint, you could argue that these summer programs do help, but it's not a long-term violence prevention strategy. It's just sort of a point in time, you know, and a lot of what you saw, great programming, maybe not as geared to violence prevention. Indirectly, you could say, well, these folks, these kids are being engaged, they have something to do, so they're less susceptible to do something else. But I think the violence prevention, the long-term outcomes you're looking for are going to be more than just summer programs.
Well, you know, if we're working with the school district and other entities, you can narrow that down. I mean, it's always process and product. We have to be aiming for product, you know, process to keep us in the same circle all the time. But if we're working with the school district and we're looking at a child who may not be in this program, but how they doing in school? How are their parents being more involved? What kind of tracks are they getting on as far as job opportunities? There's a way to measure this without kicking the ball down the road. That's, that's my point.
Definitely. Looking forward to that long-range engagement. All right, there is a motion from Commissioner Hul, second from Commissioner Wright. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Last item of old business is the scope of services modification for the Food Bank of Northeast Georgia facility, which we had conversations about and saw some amended materials from Andrew Williams this week.
Question to approve after Judge Reese.
Yes, right there.
Orders.
In order to amend the FY 2023 annual operating capital budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide grant funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to redevelopment block grant coronavirus funds for expensive lay facility expansion of the Food Bank of Northeast Georgia and for other purposes.
Right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I've got a second from Commissioner Denson. Commissioner Hamby, any further input?
No, ready to vote.
Commissioner Denson?
Same.
All right. Any further input from commissioners? Mr. Hul?
I am cautious about jumping into approving this, given how we just received so much of this today. And I understand there's an urgency behind getting this done ASAP. But, you know, we spoke to potentially putting things on hold until next week's work session for a special session, and I feel inclined to do that with this item here. But I guess before I make a motion, I'm curious to hear if that's even a shared concern.
And any other input from the body?
Yeah, I have, I also had the time to go over this really thoroughly, but there was a lot we got at the last minute. And so if the body is ready to vote for it, I feel confident now, after having spent the time on it, of where I want to go. But I do want to make sure that we all have enough time, the very lengthy, complicated procedure that puts us at risk. And I don't know if there's anything that the manager wants to add to this, to clarify for us as we're moving forward on this. And if it's the will of the rest of my colleagues to put this off for a week till, in two days, till November 10th, I'd be supportive of that as well.
Commissioner Hamby?
Sure. I think we have the work session on this. It gave us a lot of information. I know, I know the Food Bank is ready to get going. They're looking for, for ways, I mean, I think they've got this grant, there was a big picture in the paper about it. I think, I think we've got the information we need to help make this move forward. And, and, you know, also, we need to be considerate of making sure they're on their, meeting their budget and their timelines, as we know construction costs term. But I feel like I've got enough information in front of the work session in the Agenda Report.
Well, due to some of the late issue of this to our desk, it was just yesterday that they're post, that they're not asking for the $350,000. So the fact that they're not asking for the money right now makes it even easier, I think, for us to go ahead and move this forward. And so that the budget and the timelines can be met because of the other money that's come in for it. I think you were standing with the big check.
I was. Big check.
So anyway, I'm ready to, I'm ready to approve this, and then we'll have another checkpoint as needed.
Oh, Commissioner Hul?
I guess I'm thinking about, we're embedding ourselves in a lot of very large-scale projects, and they start off with a lesser commitment from us, but sometimes evolve to be a greater commitment from us. I think the North Downtown redevelopment is a particularly good example of this. And, I mean, chances are, if we did hold it for a week, or nine days, I would probably find myself supporting it, since it sounds like many in the room have found themselves able to thoroughly read through all this. But I'm going to be honest with you all, I didn't read through all 60 of these pages in the last 12 hours. And I, I'm guessing many in the public, I mean, it's not even posted online right now. So I guess I'm just, if staff can clarify, is the Food Bank still able to reach their timeline if we took action on this on the 10th instead of today, or would that somehow throw or mention their gears?
Well, so the urgency behind this is, and I'll answer your question, Commissioner, but give a little context first, is that we have a deadline to expend the grant funds from the state of approximately $9 million by December 31st of next year, so a little over a year. And of course, construction projects take some time. And so what the approval tonight would be the approval of the scope, which then gives authorization to the architects to finalize the construction drawings. That, that has to, that takes some time, some permitting, then bid it out, the bids are on the street, then get that back, ink the contract, and we know how that works with the, with the contractor, and then they have to order the metal building. And that's what, where there's a little concern about, what's the lead time on these materials? If that metal building pushes us out too far, then we might run in danger of not being able to expend the grant funds before December 31st. And DCA said no extensions, and we'd have to return whatever was done at the time, and ostensibly, somebody would have to make up that gap. So that's the urgency that's pushing us. You know, it was asked today, you know, well, can we delay this a month? And my response was no. I mean, at the very least, I would, minimum, I would, or the maximum I would do is one week, if you needed time. And I want to recognize, and I want to apologize to you all for the late nature of this, but again, it's, there's a lot of complicated projects, and we're trying to get to agreement with external entities about shared risk and things of that nature. So all that being said, I don't know if we're already past the point where the metal building doesn't come in on time. So every day could be precious, but if you need time to consider it, then certainly you should take that. But at this point, staff is comfortable with what we presented to you and willing to answer any questions.
Commissioner Hamby? Sure.
I'd just like to point out, too, that we've already voted on this once before. This is just a modification to that scope of services that we previously approved. So all those 60 pages we may have seen before, and now we're seeing them again, but, but there's just, you know, some of the changes within the budget to help them meet their numbers.
Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, just some of the new information that I had, that I got some reassurance from, but it is the, the over $8 million that the Food Bank is the funding sources, and that includes funding sources from a bank loan, some, what was it, some other things that were in here that are not done deals yet. Senovis loan, cash on hand securities endowment, Jackson County commitment. And I was reassured by some of our discussion, but then we also have these places in August and September and November where the, the Food Bank has to put money into this escrow account. What are the consequences if, for some reason, some of this financing falls through?
Well, the worst-case scenario is that the building's under construction and the money is not there to finish it, and so we would have to halt construction. And then that would become an issue negotiating with the contractor about unwinding that and paying that down. And then, and as you all know, the state's required that the JDA hold title to the property for five years. So then the JDA has a building that's half-built, and then either we complete the building or we tear it down, because you just can't have a half-built building. So that would be the worst-case scenario. And so what we tried to do in this, the way to mitigate that 100% is to require every penny of that cash in an escrow account right now, months before it would need to be used, which I think the Food Bank felt like that was untenable. Like, for instance, and I would offer this to you, too, Commissioner, that we don't have the bids yet. And so if we force the land bank to take out a loan now for a bid that we've yet to get, and maybe we don't need all the funds, that might be an unnecessary step. So we do have the opportunity to get to the construction bids and see where we are. We can check back in with you all. Given this trajectory, we don't have to come back for any future approvals going forward. The JDA would have to approve the contract with the contractor. But there is an opportunity for us all to sort of assess where we are. If, if the costs are way in excess of what we've all committed to and the budget that you would approve, then we're going to have to go back to the drawing board and see what we can do. And there is a piece in that language that the attorneys put together in the MOU that says that both the JDA and the Food Bank have the opportunity to eliminate some portions of it. The administrative wing is the one thing that's been identified as, and I want to be clear about that, too, that would not be like lopping off a piece of the building and not building it at all. That would be building the shell but not outfitting the interior, and they'd come back at some point in the future. And they are currently, the Food Bank is currently working with the architect to delineate how much funding that could save. So we'll be working on some backup plans. We'll get to that construction bid. That's really where the rubber meets the road when we sign the contract with the contractor.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hul?
Yeah, I appreciate all that explanation, and it simultaneously helps and also doesn't fully change my mind. I'm just feeling like, at least for me personally, it feels like the responsible thing to do is have some time to actually see this. I mean, we debate how important it is for us to be solid on the risk we take on when we have a contract for $30,000, you know? And, and this is a contract about a project that's upwards of $17 million, where there is a change only hours before the meeting from 17.3 to 17.5 million. That's just the, the thing highlighted on page one here. It's $200,000 difference. And just, you know, I really appreciate the scramble that staff has done. I mean, we were getting emails about this at 11:00 PM, you know? So you all have worked hard, I'm sure people at the Food Bank have as well. But I don't feel like I personally, in good conscience, can support something that's come to us so last minute and feels this big. So I'm going to make a motion to hold until the 10th.
I'll second that.
All right, I've got a substitute motion to hold until the 10th. Any further input before we do round robin on the substitute motion? All right, Clerk Spratlin? This is the motion to hold until the 10th.
Hul?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
No.
Amby?
No.
Navin Poet?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Wright?
No.
Denson?
No.
Five ayes, four noes.
All right. Motion carries that we will hold, and you will see this on the 10th. All right. Everybody will get some time to read.
Can you remind me what's the other item for 10, 10?
This is the only one now.
The park and this, okay, thank you.
The park was approved.
Oh, that's right. We did.
The park was approved tonight.
Yeah, okay. So now it's just this one for the special session, and then?
And then the work session items.
We'll repost this on Friday, the agenda item, and have it out there so that everybody knows a special session on the 10th about the same thing that we have right now.
If there's any possibility there won't be a quorum on the 10th, then that could dramatically impact the project.
I will not be in this seat. I will be out of the country, and so Commissioner Myers will be sitting in this seat.
I'm not here. It got changed, the work session got changed, so I'm not available.
Mike is not here.
I'm committed to speaking in the Roosevelt Group. I may see what, I don't know what time that is. I think it's at 6:00.
I have, I have a conflict on the 10th.
All right, can we have a motion reconsidered?
Yeah, yes.
I'll move to reconsider.
All right, motion from Commissioner Edwards to reconsider. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, second from Commissioner Link, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion from Commissioner Edwards to approve, second from Commissioner Thornton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any, any extensions?
I'm going to vote no, not against the project, but just against the way this has unfolded.
All right. Please, note for the record, Commissioner Hul voting no. All right?
Thank you, Manager Williams.
All right, thanks, everybody, for your work.
Good question.
All right, appreciate it. All right, we have one item of new business, so I need a motion for suspension of rules.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Edwards, second from Commissioner Thornton to suspend the rules. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. You have in front of you appointments for the hospital authority of Clark County. If I can get a motion to approve that slate?
Move to approve the slate.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Commissioner Edwards, second from Commissioner Denson to approve the slate. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right, hearing none. Jeff Bishop, Peter Shed, and Cecilia Santa Benez will be each serving six-year terms on the hospital authority. I very much appreciate those members of this community and all who applied for, for these roles. We had fantastic interviews, and all were highly qualified. All right, now is the time when we have public hearing deliberation on recommendations from the Athens Clark County Planning Commission, and we consider these one at a time. We have two items tonight. The first is item 23 regarding 165 Mill Center Boulevard, 160 Melwood Drive, and 180 Melwood Drive. Would any member of the public like to speak to this item?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Thank you very much. I'm Jerry Wood with Do South. We're the owner of this property and the, the engineer and surveyors of record. We bought this property with the, with the intent to build some good workforce housing and have been back to the Planning Commission several times and gotten a lot of good recommendations and a lot of good suggestions, and have put those into the plan that you see here. So we, we're very excited about it and hope that everyone here is as well. Just wanted to talk a little bit about it. It's, this is, this is not for student housing. We tried to design these as three bedrooms, two and a half bath, more traditional with a master bedroom and two bedroom sharing a traditional full bathroom and, and just a single-car garage, so, so it'll really appeal to the working community and individuals, maybe with, with young kids or with kids. And so I also tried to incorporate into the plan a lot of walkability, not just around the community and through the, through the open spaces, but also sidewalks connecting along Jennings Mill Parkway and then up Melwood and up Mill Center toward Atlanta Highway, where it's only about a 10-minute walk to Academia Brewing and the mall area. We feel like this property is really well-suited for this type of housing. It's got great access points to Atlanta Highway, through Jennings Mill Parkway in several places, and even through Alt Mill Center. And then also access to the 316 corridor through Jennings Mill Parkway and the bypass. It's also got really good access to public transportation with a quick walk to Atlanta Highway where there's transit stop. And in the incorporation of this, of this design with the townhome style, we, we minimized our impervious imprint on the site with only 39% impervious footprint and maximized our tree canopy and green space coverage with the connecting green space areas and also with the addition of 32 large canopy trees in those areas, which will give us a total of 61% tree canopy between conserved and planted. I feel like this is a great area for workforce housing and in an area of very high need.
Thank you, Mr. South.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is anyone else here to speak to this item? Is anyone else here to speak to this item? Commissioner Hul, this is in your district, I know you have a commission-to-find option.
I do indeed. I'll start with a motion to approve the ordinance for the future land use change.
Second.
All right, motion for future land use from Commissioner Hul, second from Commissioner Edwards. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, I'll just share my remarks for both upfront here. There is a commission-to-find option, we covered the details of it.
We vote on that?
Should we vote?
He comments, and then we'll...
Oh, gotcha, sorry.
Yes, we will vote, I hope, yeah. There are, there are four conditions. We've outlined them in the agenda-setting meeting, they haven't changed since then. I do appreciate that since then, the applicant who just spoke also shared with us just kind of a concept for our consideration when we think about what a playground might look like there. That's not part of the binding plan, but, you know, I, to be perfectly frank, this development is not my ideal design by any means, but I don't in any way want to let the perfect be the enemy of the good, especially when we really need more housing. And I really appreciate that we have somebody who wanted to see this project through and tried to be very creative repeatedly and has persisted for about a year and got to a point where a majority of the planning commission supported it. And I really appreciate the time of planning department staff to help us make it even a bit better today. And I look forward to us hopefully having some more places for people to live in District 6.
Any follow-up, Commissioner Edwards?
Can you list the four conditions?
The four conditions.
Sure, those are, as I understand how this is going to work, those are actually tied to the rezone, but I'm happy to list them now if y'all would like.
Sure.
So the first is the width of the alleys will be no greater than 16 feet, not including any required curb and gutter, and shall be no greater than 20 feet where curb and gutter is installed unless otherwise required by the Clark County Fire Marshal. So that's basically just reducing the overall pavement on this plan from the binding site plan. Second is there's that triangular tract in the southeast corner that's not part of this development that fronts primarily Jennings Mill Road or Jennings Mill Parkway. And they would not otherwise be required to put a sidewalk there to connect where they do have to put sidewalks, so the second condition connects sidewalk there.
Okay, slow down, slow down.
Okay.
And that's number two.
Sure, yeah. These were covered in the agenda-setting meeting as well. The third is all the planted trees will be large canopy trees, except in a couple specific places where that won't work because of power lines, and that they're also going to be planted at a three-inch CAL DBH, which is the technical way of putting in the language here that we're going to plant older trees so they'll grow bigger faster. And the fourth, and probably the most important or tied to the sidewalk community, is that all passive and active recreational amenities, including the paths and sidewalks, will be completed before more than 50% of the units can be completed. And the way that's worded is in a way that I think was amenable to both the applicant and planning department staff, where I think everyone felt confident that we can move forward, ensuring that we don't end up with a partially completed neighborhood that has homes but none of the good amenity stuff that they're putting forward. So with all that in mind, I'm excited to first support the future land use, which, you know, this first vote is just about, do we think residential developments make sense along this corridor that was originally conceived of as an industrial corridor but has since been developed almost entirely as residential?
All right, so I've got a future land use revision motion from Commissioner Hul, second from Commissioner Edwards, Commissioner Edwards, any input? Any others? Go ahead and read that if you would.
I'll first read the future land use amendment. An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to amending the official future land use map of Athens-Clark County by changing the designation on approximately 11.36 acres of land located at 160 Melwood Drive, 180 Melwood Drive, 165 Mill Center Boulevard from general business and traditional neighborhood to mixed-density residential and for other purposes.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now we need a motion for the zoning item.
Motion to approve the commission-to-find option, including the four conditions outlined therein, for the ordinance to rezone the three parcels in question.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Hul, second from Commissioner Edwards. If we could read this one.
An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to rezoning three parcels of land comprising approximately 11.36 acres located at 160 and 180 Melwood Drive and 165 Mill Center Boulevard from RS-8 Single-Penny Residential to RM-2 PD Mixed-Density Residential Plan Development and for other purposes.
All right, any further input?
I had just a little bit.
Yes.
I, you know, I'm really grateful for the developer, Mr. Wood, and Commissioner Hul working together to get this sidewalk extended beyond what's required. I think that's great for the community. You know, I'm appreciative of more housing coming to this county, absolutely. But as I alluded to earlier, I think we're, we're not, we're not doing as good as we can with some of the housing policies here with developing some of these outer greenfields. We've seen several of these come across our desk in the past four years, where large parcels sort of on the outskirts of town get developed pretty intensively. And with these large developments comes the need for more services to get to those areas. They're a little more difficult for people to get around the county, a little more car-centric. So I guess that's why I'm so hot on the development of more dense zoning in town, you know, with the ADU policy, some of the other work our planning department is doing. If we can create more housing in the urban core, we can maintain some of this green belt, as we've, as we've said for so many years here. So thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Moving on to the last vote of the evening, item 24. And we need to get public input first. This regards 155 Mitchell Street, where there was a planning, planning commission recommendation, excuse me, to approve with conditions. Is anyone here to speak to this item? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. My name is Rob Bach with Core Spaces. We're the applicant developer and owner of the proposed project here. I just really want to introduce myself tonight and say thank you again for the consideration, and just want to concede my time, but here to answer any questions. Really do feel like this is a great project and this location, and really kind of spent a lot of time evaluating the voluntary inclusionary housing ordinance that has been passed in the, you know, the past few months here. You know, there was a lot of time that went into it and great conversation with that. We were able to put a project before you this evening that really hits on a lot of those goals and removes a lot of the, you know, previous waivers that we were looking for at this project. So with that, really appreciate the consideration this evening, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bach. Is there anyone else here to speak to 155 Mitchell? All right, seeing none, this is in Commissioner Wright's districts. I'll turn it over to you, Commissioner.
I am thrilled to see this version of 155 Mitchell Street. I hope that you guys have had time to look at it and also feel that it's improved in the direction that this body is hoping for in consideration of taking this property to a higher, better and higher use. I think its location is perfect for the live-work-play environment that we try to strive for, and whether work is school or working while you're in school, I think that this location has, has that built out for it. And I appreciate the hard work and the patience it's gone through with this group on this project so that it merges with what's been done in the inclusionary zoning. And with that, I make a motion that we approve with conditions listed.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Wright, second from Commissioner Link. Commissioner, any further comments before I ask for Judge Drake to read the ordinance?
I just want to remind the public that this project, well, the development of this parcel first came to us, I don't know, what, six or seven years? Seventeen. Yeah, it was like six or seven years ago. And it was for a gleaming senior condo tower. And there was reluctance to approve it, but it did pass under the notion that it would diversify the downtown population by bringing seniors in. It wasn't going to be just another student housing project. When it came back to us a couple of years later, it was a student housing project. Now we're seeing a project that is incorporating our inclusionary zoning ordinance and hopefully will include some workforce housing or accommodations for students that are not as wealthy, who wouldn't typically be able to afford to live in these towers downtown. So there, there is some diversity. I'm grateful for the changes to the design. We have a little more traditional roof and cornice element to the design, which I feel like is more in line with the aesthetics of our classic city. So I, I am ready to approve this project.
Thanks, Commissioner. If I could have Attorney Drake read the ordinance?
An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to amending a planned development comprising approximately 1.7 acres and located at 155 Mitchell Street in the CDRIV PD Commercial Downtown River Design Area Plan Development and for other purposes.
Thanks, Chad, I appreciate it. Any further input? Commissioner Myers.
Yeah, I just wanted to commend this project as our first inclusionary zoning project that we are using going through this process that we established a couple of months ago. One of the things that I particularly like is that the development used the reduction in parking. And this is a perfect location for this. If a reduction in parking is not going to work at this location, it's not going to work anywhere. I know there are concerns about a lot of student housing in Athens, but again, this spot right now, I can't imagine there being anything else but student housing here because it's surrounded by student, student housing projects. The project where it's located will allow students to actually be more, for, to be more affordable because they do not have to bring a car, they do not have to pay for fuel, their parents do not need to necessarily have another insurance policy for a car because they are so close to campus and all the facilities. And the new bike share program they're going to open up there. So I'm really happy to see that as well as part of our transition away from always thinking auto-centrically.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any further input? All right, there's a motion, a second on the floor, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries, go forth and do what. All right, I have no reports this evening. Manager Williams, anything from you?
No, sir.
Attorney Drake?
No, sir.
All right, go ahead and begin with Commissioner Hamby, and we'll move around to Commissioner Davenport.
Commissioner, Mayor, public comment?
Oh, thank you very much, I appreciate that. I was so excited that we're in the eight o'clock hour, I was ready to move. Input from the public on any item not on the agenda is what we will hear at this time. So anyone who would like to speak now is your opportunity.
Thank you, catching it. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioner. My name is Emily Thompson, President of International Association of Firefighters, Local 2795. There is a resolution that has been drafted that includes language for Firefighters' Mediation Act. We are humbly asking that it be brought forward and added as an agenda item for consideration at the next agenda-setting meeting on November 15, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, appreciate it. Any others tonight? All right, thank you very much. All right, we'll begin with Commissioner Hamby, we'll move around to Commissioner Davenport.
Sure, thank you, Mayor, and I look forward to seeing that on the agenda that we can, that we can consider. And I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry, I can't. Thought I'd give it a try.
I just want to share that Commissioner-elect Dexter Fisher will be hosting a, I don't know if it's a conference, but a gang conversation at Ebenezer West on Thursday, I think at 6:00.
6:00.
We should have all gotten a flyer about that. I am glad, even though he's not elected yet, that this has bubbled to the top. And that's all I have to say, and I'm going to excuse myself, thank you.
Thanks, Fisher. Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I'm glad you shared that about the gathering at Ebenezer West on Thursday. I was not aware of that yet. And that is, that is a gigantic concern of mine. Over on the east side, we had the shooting, I guess it was two Fridays ago, that has led to a retaliation shootings and another death in this community. These are, these are atrocious situations for the people who are involved with them and their families and their communities. And I look forward to us really working in creative new ways to sort of, to address the gang problem here in Athens to, really to give people better choices and to keep them safer as well. I also want to do a shout-out to, again, our Clean Energy Director, Aaron Hall, who came and presented at my town hall last week. I really appreciate that, as I do the staff who come out and help us not only at these work sessions, retreats, but in public forums as well, because there's so much information and so many agenda items and so many issues that we're dealing with in this community. I'm very appreciative of having such helpful and informed staff and dedicated as well. And I think that's all I'll do, and I'll pass it on, and happy post-Halloween. Great, great Halloween week.
Yeah. Happy Halloween, yeah.
Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, just a quick little thing. Let's update our traffic closing web portal or whatever. There's some outdated information there, and somebody was contacting me panicked, turning the rumpus, trying to get out of the deck. The roads are closed, where am I going to take? Anyway. We read recently about this person on our streets, on Prince Avenue, just beyond our road diet, traffic calming, protected area, who was struck and killed by a car, by a person, struck and killed by another person driving a car. And, you know, it really sort of brought home to me the importance of the work that we're trying to do here to calm down this insane car traffic that it just seems like it's gotten worse since the pandemic. I mean, I live kind of close to the Loop, and I hear this crazy drag racing, you know? We're all trying to calm traffic in our own neighborhoods. It's like the number-one request coming in, you know, people speeding through neighborhoods, you know? This morning, people complaining about cars flying down Boulevard during Halloween. I mean, it's just insane. So, you know, somebody died on our roads yet again. Manager Williams, how many deaths, deaths have we had from car crashes? I mean, multiples, right, six, seven, eight in the year-to-date?
Yes.
So, Mayor, I sure would love to see us all work together and extend the Prince Avenue project, see what we could do to work with, with GDOT, the representative, maybe Mr. Boswell, and some of our state representatives, because, you know, it's pretty jarring. You know, you're going down Prince, wow, this is a really cool, yeah, this is, this is the way it should be, you know, wow. Then it goes right back to four lanes, you know? And people start flying and pacing each other all over again. So it, you know, let's build on what we've accomplished, let's keep this going, creating more safe routes for children and all people in our community to safely navigate the county. I'd love to see it go down Prince Avenue to the Loop. And, and again, just the deaths from these car crashes, the folks driving these cars, it's just, it's, it's maddening to me. I mean, it's with, it's clearly within our authority. We talk about infrastructure every time we get together behind this rail, so, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner, and I do know from direct engagement with staff that they're working with GDOT to look at safety improvements beyond, beyond Village Avenue on Prince. Very interested in myself. Commissioner Hul?
Thanks, a few things. There's going to be a mall town hall Saturday, November 12 at noon, inside the mall. The people who own part of and have options on the rest of the big old mall tract have submitted their plans, their latest round of plans with a new engineering firm and everything onboard to the planning department. And so a town hall will be hosted on Saturday, November 12 at noon to discuss those plans. I also wanted to express my support for the labor organizers in this community who have showed up with great persistence for years and have been especially focusing their efforts on this resolution for the past few months. I want to appreciate my colleagues who have co-sponsored it. I'll be circulating a draft of this to everyone here, if not tonight, then tomorrow. So be on the lookout for that, please. I echo the request to get this on our agenda for the next cycle. I don't want us to forget the housing crisis, and I'm thinking a lot about our very... I don't want us to forget the housing crisis, and I'm thinking a lot about our very deep discussion in the retreat, and just wanted to share publicly the two, in this meeting, the two requests I had put forth in that when the mayor had asked for our, you know, requests for committee assignments. One is for us to evaluate our building maintenance code regarding tenants' rights and looking at standards for property upkeep, and the other being examining our single-family regulations, specifically and solely considering an increase from two to four unrelated people and considering an exemption to that ordinance for homesteader properties. I think that that latter request is especially echoed by the data that's been collected by the Athens Well-being Project that was shared at their In Vision 2.0 meeting that was co-hosted a couple of weeks ago, where they spoke to the need for, when we talk about economic development for our creative economy, our creative community, one of the top things that creatives that they've engaged with cited as a barrier is housing and specifically our single-family zoning codes and regulations being barriers for people being able to afford to live in this community and also create art. And then the last thing is I have some open office hours and a community cleanup that will be announced on, you know, potentially with some changes on my social media, Facebook and Twitter, Jesse for Athens, but that is because I am expecting a new human to be born into this world. They are scheduled to emerge before our next voting meeting. We never know when exactly they'll come, but whenever they do, I will be unavailable for at least a few days. So at any given moment, I might be running to the cries.
A few days?
Yeah.
We'll have some post-meeting discussion.
Totally, totally, I'm saying totally indisposed.
Get Commissioner dancing.
Yeah, a couple of days. So, yeah, I also, yeah, I am very happy to see the labor organizing resolution be on the agenda and move forward, and appreciate the organizing work that's been going on there, and I very much look forward to that being adopted. I also want to point out early voting, last week of early voting. Tomorrow is like our awesome, super early voting day. Every voting precinct is going to be open 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. tomorrow is the only day that would be that way. So you can go anywhere from the library to Cooperative Extension Office, to Miriam Moore, to all over the place. Check out on the website, you can see all the locations. And the last thing, it's already been brought up by a few of my colleagues, is definitely the, you know, while we've seen overall actually a reduction in crime in our community and across the nation, there's definitely been on the rise, especially violent gun crime, especially around gangs. And we definitely had a good discussion about that in our retreat, and I am appreciative of like some of the youth violence prevention kind of efforts, but as the manager said, and I agree, those are some more, more like long-term kind of, kind of things. And I said this during the retreat, and I stand with it, that I strongly believe that ACC.gov should do initiated gun buyback program. We are basically the only large metro area in Georgia that has not done one in the last few months, and I know that there are, you know, varying levels of efficiency from those things, but it is proven that it will get at least some guns off the streets. And honestly, at this point, I want to try everything because we've just had way too many of these notifications lately of, you know, another young person shot dead. And I, while I'm willing to take on and work on these long-term solutions and those have to be done, I also want to take as much immediate action as we possibly can do, and I think our community expects us to. So I, again, just urge my colleagues here to support us going ahead and funding a gun buyback program, either with ARPA dollars or with other funds. So, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Yeah, I also want to thank the firefighters for being here and for meeting with us over these past few weeks. I've really enjoyed it, and I am eager to co-sponsor and support a resolution to begin union organizing acknowledgement in this community. It is legal in the state of Georgia for firefighters. I believe Governor Jimmy Carter made the carve-out that allows firefighters among public employees to unionize, so I look forward to that. And speaking of voting and state leadership, I want to remind everyone to vote. There's a lot of things we talk about wanting to do in this community that we cannot do because state laws prohibit us from doing it. So it's so important that people vote all the way down the ballot and truly consider your state leadership. We talk about violence in our community and a gun buyback problem and the prevalence of guns on our streets. Georgia is the state where most guns come from, most illegal guns leaving the state come from Georgia because it's so easy to get your hands on a gun. Most of the gun violence in our community apparently is stolen guns. So there are people who are legally obtaining guns, but they're obviously not responsible enough to store them properly. A lot of them are stolen out of vehicles, unlocked vehicles. We have extremely lax gun laws in this community. Almost anybody can get their hands on a gun legally, and those who can't legally get their hands on a gun are easily able to access one because there are so many of them. So we need to elect better state leadership that will crack down on these lax laws and make our streets safer for all of us.
All right. Vote like your life depends on it, because it does. Please get out and vote. Happy Thanksgiving, I know it's early. And also, please look out, please apply, we have some position open for the boards and authorities. My application I do next Friday, the 11th. It'd be awesome to have some awesome candidates, so please check out the ACC.gov website and apply. And a shout out to the Sheriff's Office and ACCPD for our awesome trucker treat and festival last weekend, that was awesome. Look forward to seeing that again next year. While rumpus downtown, it was awesome. Speaking of our streets, Prince Avenue Public Input, it's still been sought for Prince Avenue as well. The Southwest Advisory Committee is seeking public input on trash hauling. I know it's been contentious in the past, but please find your input. We meet next, I think it's next Wednesday at 5:30. Happy Native American Harrison Month or Additionist Month, and something that might can be said to do, motion to adjourn.
I've got a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all. Patrick, I need your signature.